Michael Yosse. Call the meetings to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, that one's your call.
All right, I'd like to welcome all our guests this evening, a lot of town employees, incom, and those watching on cable.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yost.
Yes, I see that the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the new health care insurance, so I'm going to recuse myself because I have a family member who is a participant of the health insurance program. I'll be sitting in the audience.
I had a request for some of the people that watched the meetings, the last meetings. Everybody could maybe take their microphones and move them a little closer to us. The folks at home had a hard time listening, and in the room, even some of the folks in the room had a hard time listening, so if we could try to speak up, it would be helpful, I think, for all people in attendance.
They get shuffled around.
Yeah, yeah, it does, so if we could do that, I think it would be helpful for everyone.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item, the adoption of a new health insurance process. By way of background for those who are watching the meeting at home and those who are here in the audience but were not here for the earlier meeting, employees in particular, the town has been in discussions with its current health insurance provider and last Monday received an official renewal quote of 12 and 1/2 percent premium increase for fiscal year 2017, which would be for the period beginning July 1st this year, July 1st, 2016. And we've benefited from good renewal rate. We actually saw a premium reduction in fiscal year 2016 through a process of negotiation, but we're advised that a series of factors are driving us to a renewal rate, again proposed at 12 and 1/2 percent based on the current design of the plan. Using round numbers, that's an increase of the health insurance budget of over $500,000 for fiscal year 2017, a substantial number, I think, by anybody's account. We've been in discussions with our health insurance consultant, and the board is asked to consider adoption of this health insurance process as a means to open a discussion with our employees relative to the change of the design of our health insurance plan as provided by Harvard Pilgrim with an interest towards reducing the premium and generating savings. The law that's being enacted allows the town to, through a process, implement changes up to the standard established at the state level by the Group Insurance Commission. It also allows us to modify, again, our existing plan to be at those standards as well. Right now, based on rough projections, we are anticipating that this type of reform could reduce the health insurance premium increase for the town for fiscal year 2017 by approximately $200,000, which would make a significant reduction in that cost increase projected at $500,000, obviously. The first step in the process was to issue notice to our employees through their representatives, which was done last week. We had an information meeting with the representatives of those groups earlier this evening, and then the next step is for a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I have to stress, this is an evolving situation. We have, we've received, again, a quote from Harvard Pilgrim, as more and more data is available based on the performance of our plan, it comes to light, that number could change, so this will continue to evolve, but those are the round numbers at this point in time in the process. And based on that, the board is asked to approve this process as a means to provide a structure for those reforms to take place in time for the renewal on July 1st. Doesn't preclude informal conversations with our employees, which we expect to take place, but it's a safeguard to ensure we can take the appropriate steps to reconcile, towards reconciling the fiscal year 2017 budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to just say a couple things, if I could. We talk about the one-July date, which means it's four months from right now, but it's really more like one-June for us, right? Because we've got to get it into the town meeting, into our budgets and everything else, so it's really shorter than that, it's really three months. And I don't want anyone here to think that this is something that we just woke up this week and decided, geez, you know, we're going to stop looking into the health insurance for the town. We have been working on this for several months, and every avenue we've looked at, there has to be, there has, there has to be a change. So I don't want the employees of the town to think that, you know, we're going at this thing just, you know, last minute, we pulled it off the shelf. This has been a very difficult, I've been here six years now, we've dealt with the health insurance almost every year that I've been here, probably the most difficult I've ever seen. And I don't, it's not unique to North Reading here, okay? I want anyone to know, it's not just us, it's everywhere. So it does, and I'm going to say a bad word, it sucks, the situation we're in. We were basically giving you three months, we're giving ourselves three months to come with some rectify, to come up with a plan that works for both of us, so I don't want anyone to think that we're jamming this down your throat, but, you know, I just sat back and I thought about this, how quick of a time we have from tonight. Really only have, actually, less than that, we probably only have six weeks to come up and finalize this thing so we can get it all locked in. Not a lot of time, so I just leave it at that so everyone understands, we're not just dropping this on you because we just thought of it. Thank you.
What I intended to do was to have a motion, hoping for discussion.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
I didn't know you were just going to close the door.
It's fine. Mr. Manapelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town elect to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 to 23.
Do it here a second, second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion.
Want to vote on it?
No, we open it for discussion, and then we vote. Mr. O'Leary.
As Mr. Prisco pointed out, I think that the big difference here was what we anticipated in relation to information we had as recently as probably three weeks ago, and what we anticipated for increases, and then what actually came through was significantly different. I mean, our budget projections were projecting something far less than this 12 and 1/2 percent. And as a result, we're going to have to look at plan design and significant changes. We're not necessarily looking to change healthcare carriers at this particular point. We know that that's always a, more a contention of concern to people, and you start playing around with the health insurance carriers, never mind the plans themselves. I think there's been a general high level of satisfaction with the current carrier. We'd like to try and maintain that for our employees. However, the board is in a situation where we need to, in short order, come up with some sort of a mitigation plan in relation to the costs associated with it. And we're not going to do it in a vacuum, we intend on doing it with full discussion with the employees and their representatives and the collective bargaining units, with full disclosure as to what's available to us. You know, as far as what's on the table tonight, this is a tool which is available to the board that we haven't exercised up to this point, but find it necessary because of the significant increase being proposed by Harvard Pilgrim. We don't anticipate that even when it's on the marketplace, that the, that there would be any significant difference in the proposal in relation to cost savings. So I think it's a tool that we need in our toolbox, I think it's the intention of this board to be very fair with the employees and with the taxpayers at the same time, and I look forward to the discussion and some sort of resolution. We know it's going to be in short order because we don't have much time to come to a conclusion. So while the employees have every right to be concerned, as do we as board members here trying to put together a balanced budget too. So there'll be lots of discussion, and hopefully we come to an agreement that everybody will be satisfied with. I don't think anyone's going to be happy but satisfied with, and feel as though they've been treated fairly. That would be my goal, to ensure at least they feel as though they've been treated fairly.
And for those employees that are in the audience that didn't attend the 5:00 meeting, I'm sure there'll be some additional meetings with the employees over the next few weeks.
That's correct. Under the law, the Public Employee Committee is established, and that will be the forum through which the discussions will take place. And of course, once we get to a point where there's a plan for July 1st, we would have an information session for all employees.
Are there any questions from the audience?
Will you?
Yes.
My name's Matt Carroll from the North Reading Fire Department. We attended the meeting today, we took good information. First off, I'd like to say, we understand that, you know, this is on your mind, you're thinking about health insurance for your employees. We feel a little caught off guard. We were notified late last week that we had to attend a meeting, and then within an hour, a vote was going to be taken by the board to choose to adopt Sections 21 through 23, which we think is a big deal to us as far as collective bargaining goes. We're trying to protect those rights of our members to protectively, collectively bargain. And one point that came up during today's discussion was, very little effort has been made to bring the IAC Insurance Advisory Committee together prior to this vote today. And the feeling from my membership is, that shouldn't have been done prior to this vote. This is a big deal. In the past, all members of the IAC have shown great, what's the word, commitment to achieving a solution that works for everybody. History will show that, that they've worked well together in the past. When we changed providers, when the financial crisis hit, you know, we came together, we found something that worked for everybody, it was a, you know, solution for everybody that worked for everybody. So we feel that bringing this to the IAC prior to this vote is to the best benefit to moving the process forward, and I hope you can all, you know, see that, that's what we're trying to do. And I make a motion that you, you know, bypass this vote, choose a no vote today if you do take a vote, and bring it back to the IAC and see what we can come up with. We understand the timeline, it's quick, we've got a few weeks, we know the May 1st deadline to notify employees of this change, so we're going to work towards that, so I implore you to no vote, meet with the IAC, and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Mark Gerney, teachers' union president. I just want to kind of echo what Matt has just said, is that although this may be a tool for you and a tool of a process or an ability to meet a deadline or to create a deadline, we feel that by adopting this so soon, it ties our hands as town employees in regards to having the proper time for collective bargaining. It hasn't even been, the IAC hasn't even been called together, and I think the proper, proper format for this would have been to pull the IAC together, to present us possible changes, work off of past history of how we've worked together collaboratively to put something together that best works for the town. And there's a reason why you haven't implemented 32B Section 21, 23, is because we've gotten together and we were able to decide and agree upon a policy that best works. But by taking this vote tonight, you immediately put us into these timeframes, these, this process, which makes us get to a certain point, and literally takes it out of the hands of the employees and puts it into the hands of the town. And honestly, I don't, I don't think that's a fair process. It's not a fair process to the very people who dedicate their lives to you daily for protection and provision, and yet you're saying to them, let's adopt a process which basically gives you no voice. All we're asking, all we're asking for is give us two weeks, pull the IAC together, let us look at what some of the adopted changes are, the adopted or proposals that this new Harvard plan could look like, see if we can work to an agreement and not put us into a process that will tie our hands and leave us in 30 days with, all right, guys, take it or leave it. At least it allows us the, you know, the due process of saying, wait a second, let's, let's look at both sides of this, we know that you have to save, and ultimately, we want to save. And honestly, the changes in any type of healthcare saves the town but hurts the people. I mean, we end up paying the copayments, the deductibles, the out-of-pocket payments for our families. None of us can sit here and say what type of health benefits we'll need in the next year, so as, as much as you want to say that we'll save 4% to 5% to 6% on our premium, sure, the town will definitely save that, but we won't definitely save that. So we just want due process. We want a couple of weeks, sit the IAC down, take a look at what these changes are going to entail. We're not asking for a month, we can still meet the May 1st deadline if we come to an agreement, if you just, again, pull the IAC together. So by voting tonight, it's just, it's, it's too quick, we just learned, I just got my certified letter from you on Saturday, and so we didn't have any time to inform our members or to have them come here or to tell the town of North Reading to call your selectmen and say, hold off on the vote. We didn't have any of that time. So all we have is, right now, to tell you that we think this is a little too premature without the right process. So that's what we're asking, all of us, not just the teachers, firemen, police, the town employees, are asking you, give us two weeks, pull the IAC together, let's take a look at what we can do prior to getting into a tying-your-hands process, 32B Section 21, 23. Go and look at Section 19, that's where we want to be, not 21, 23 just yet. And again, history serves us correct. If her history is true, then we're going to make it work. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Prisco.
What's the risk we take by not voting on this article tonight? Which I will admit, I'm very naive on this article, I don't know a lot about it, so what's the risk we take by not taking action tonight? If we granted another couple of weeks to what they?
We have town administration, we have consultants.
Good evening, Ken Lombardi from NFP Insurance Advisors. So the issue is timing. So if, if there's a traditional discussion between the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee, whose advisory in nature and a recommendation can't be reached, then the issue is this, is we owe the employees 60 days' notice of advanced change of benefits. So if we can't reach an agreement that's suitable to management and the unions, and we don't reach this by a certain date, then we can't implement for July 1st. So what would happen is a continued or prolonged amount of time before we do reach agreement, and then essentially, from whatever that date is, then we're looking at 60 days' change before benefits could be changed with the employees. So we probably would miss, if that were the case, a July 1st deadline, which would have to extend into the fiscal year. So we would be losing whatever 1/12 of the savings or cost avoidance from any of those changes, providing there's no agreement from any recommendation. And of course, if there is an agreement, then the town still has a, an obligation, as I understand it, and an attorney, but likely to still reach out and collectively bargain the change. So after the IAC does make a recommendation that's suitable, then the town would have to still go out and reach each union and engage them in formal collective bargaining. Presumably, that would be formality, but there would still be a process you'd have to follow. So we would be potentially missing the effective date of the coverage of change. That's the biggest risk to delay in the process.
So, Mr., if I could just ask some, based on my question.
Yes, Mr. Prisco.
So that puts us, if we grant the two weeks, that'd put us around March 14th, would be a Monday, March 14th, and then the 60-day notification would kick in, which puts you around May 16th, and you're saying, May 16th?
No, no, if, if after, excuse me, if I could maybe read, once a recommendation is made, it would have to be completely, fully, collectively bargained to agreement by May 1st effectively for July 1 effective date. So whatever the recommendation would be, we would have to reach agreement prior to managing a change.
That's assuming you haven't adopted 21 and 23?
That's correct.
Mr. Gilberto.
I mean, I'm looking at this, if they're asking for two weeks, I-
For adoption of the, just give, give it a little bit of time for them to consider-
I don't see why, we couldn't do it. I'm just looking at the calendar, and I think, based on what, and again, I'm naive a little bit about that, what we are trying to vote in tonight, I'm not educated on it as well as everyone else in the room, but if I look at the calendar and understand what you're saying, I think we can, we can give them the two weeks and try to work as hard as we can. If we can make it even less than that, great. But the 60 days, that has me a little concerned that you're talking about.
Well, essentially, if there were an agreement between the, well, let's, let's take it in steps. The town would make a proposal to the IAC as required under Chapter 32B, and the IAC would be required to offer an opinion on the recommendation or not.
Yeah.
And that's consist of eight members, seven union representatives, and one retiree representative. If a proposal was adopted by the IAC and they made a recommendation, recommendation would be referred back to the Board of Selectmen, and that would instruct the town administrator to follow the collective bargaining process, which means that each union would have to be engaged, and we would ask that benefits be changed and invite them to collectively bargain. Presumably, since the IAC made a recommendation, that that would conclude, but there still is a formal process.
Okay.
So that formal process would need to be concluded by May 1st, or we would sort of lose the deadlines.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just, again, it's timelines that are, that are of concern. We're meeting next Monday?
Yep.
Correct?
Yes, we're meeting next Monday.
We need to meet next Monday. I think it would be, who of us to take advantage of the opportunity to meet with the IAC over the next week? Get an indication from the administration as to, you know, how is that going and is it going to be doing something that we could, feels achievable, to come to an agreement to meet the necessary deadlines? You know, so I don't know, again, weeks make a difference here, you know, so I think if we, you know, ask the town administrator, based upon his schedule, to call the IAC together to flush out, you know, what we need to consider here, and see if they can get a consensus, come to a consensus on a plan and a proposal to us, you know, within the next week, that would be fine, that would be good. You know, or if we're making significant progress, that would be helpful. Or if it's not going anywhere, then this board will have a, you know, decision to make shortly. We have, you know, whether it's one week or two weeks, but I think, I think we need to put the pressure on ourselves and the IAC in short order to hopefully do it this week, out the front of the town administrator. After he confirms with the consultant.
So you're proposing kind of a compromise, just we just heard, that sacrificing one week?
Just to see, see how quickly we can come to an agreement, if we can come to an agreement.
Mr. Gilberto.
Yeah, I think that there's a spirit of cooperation that's, was presented earlier, and it's here in the room tonight. I remain very concerned with regard to the timelines, but if we were to take this opportunity, again, and over the course of the next week, leading into the selectmen's meeting on March 7th, we could have at least one, possibly two, productive discussions, I would hope, and take that as an opportunity to build on the success of the past. I would be concerned with going beyond that timeline, though.
Okay. I'm concerned about going past even tonight, but because of everything we have to put together for the budget, not just the insurance, but I could support the one-week delay if in fact the rest of the board is in support of it. We have a motion on the table.
So I can withdraw the motion and move to table to vote on this till next Monday?
I would like to hear from representatives if they could live with a one week. You know, if they, I mean, guys, they, you know, that's not giving you a lot of time to react, so.
Yeah, I think, just quick points over there, I mean, it's, it's a step in the right direction. Like I said, we're just asking for a chance to have that ability to, at least meet as a formal IAC committee, so I appreciate, you know, you extended us at least by a week.
Okay, then let's make it work.
I'm sure we're going to be, you know, pushing forward, again, not a lot of notice, we're trying to get together and try to make this work, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Mr. Manapelli.
You're withdrawing the motion.
I'm withdrawing the motion.
And I'm withdrawing my side.
Okay, and it'll be put on our agenda for a meeting on next Monday.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an 8:00, we're 10 minutes late, public hearing on Common Vitrola All Alcohol License, Group One Entertainment, DBA, Hillview Club, approved Common Vitrola license. Read the notice of the public hearing. Okay. I'll give everybody a minute to-
Excuse me, Mr.? Would you please make the notation?
Yeah. I'm going to read the public hearing.
It is, I, I lose-
Okay. I was just waiting for-
Did you change your name?
I'll close the door, and that'll help.
Or is your real name in it?
Okay, in accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen in Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, on Monday, February 29, 216, at 8:00 PM, on the application of Group One Entertainment LLC, DBA, Hillview Country Club, for Common Vitrola All Alcohol License, licenses to be exercised at 149 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a two-story, 12,000-square-foot building with a function room consisting of two rooms and one bar, with an adjacent patio, 350 seats, and a ground-level tavern consisting of one room, one bar, and an adjacent patio of 163 seats. This hearing replaces the previously scheduled hearing of July 8, 2016, which is canceled due to inclement weather. Simon, Board of Selectmen.
Good evening.
Mr. Yeber and Mr.?
Ford.
Ford. As a preliminary matter, I have the affidavit-
I turn those over to a clerk.
Do you want the green cards or receipts?
These should be fine.
Yeah? All right. There you go.
Wow. That's a lot of-
So thank you. Before the board is, Mr. Yeber's application to operate a function facility and a tavern restaurant at the Hillview Country Club, you're all familiar, I'm sure, with Mr. Yeber's operation at the Thompson Club, very similar operation, he also operates a restaurant in Middleton, Teresa's there. So he is familiar with the operation of this exact type of function facility. Nothing is changing at the Hillview Club in terms of, in terms of operation. We're not asking for an expansion of what's already there, we're not asking to operate in any areas that I don't believe have already historically been operated in. We're doing no major renovations, it's all cosmetic-type change, not moving walls or things like that, we've changed the carpet and, and some lighting and some paint. So it's, it seems, in my opinion, a very, a very clean application. I think Mr. Yeber's a good candidate, he's an excellent operator, no issues in any of his facilities, and you know, the history you have with him, I think he's a good, good operator for this type of facility. Sitting in the wood, have any questions, or myself or Mr. Yeber?
I do.
Mr. Manapelli and Mr. O'Leary.
You said nothing has changed. What were the hours of service for the prior operation at the Hillview?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question.
Yeah, they probably don't- I was going to ask the same question. I was gonna ask the same question.
We could pull the license, it would probably take a minute to do it, but-
So saying this on here now?
So 8:00 AM, they were permitted to sell alcohol beginning at 8:00 AM?
Whatever's on the bottom of the license.
There was a modification to all of the licenses a couple of years back, two or three years back, as far as being able to serve earlier on the weekends for brunch and things like that, but I don't know if it was 8:00 or 10:00. It used to be noon, I knew, and I think it was throttled back to 8:00 or 10:00.
I thought it was 10:00.
Could've been 10:00, but whatever it is, it was consistent across the board by the board back then.
So this had a 1:00 license?
I believe it did, only because, to accommodate different, for the functions.
Can I ask if Mr. Friska- Clerk could read the hours of operation that's on the license? Is that okay? Yes, Mrs. Manipelli?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It reads the hours during which alcoholic beverages may be sold are from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, weekdays except Sunday, which is noon to 1:00 AM. Last call, 12:40, all glasses off table, 1:00 AM, all patrons off premises, 1:15 AM. It just seems to me like it's-
A little backwards.
It's very, it's a pretty broad range. But can I also ask, just, I just had two more questions, actually, three on this.
Are we gonna, are you trying to get this resolved immediately here, or?
The hours of operation? Well, I mean-
Ask your second question.
It's a new, it's, this is a new license, so they wouldn't have the answer to that, we probably should. What are your hours at Thompson? What are your hours to serve alcohol?
We open, let's see, we're open seven days a week. We start serving alcohol at Thompson, we open, we open until like 9:00 in the morning, we don't, I mean, no one even comes in that early to serve alcohol, but it's there if they, if they want it. Very, very seldom you see anybody coming in that early, and we close at 11:00 at night.
How about at Teresa's?
Teresa's.
About to serve alcohol, the hours?
About the same in Middleton?
Yeah, oh, it's the same, is that the same place?
Yeah, we're both the same, yeah. A little bit later on the weekends. We never really get to the 1:00 time, but, you know, it's always good to have it naturally if someone's limbering in these potties. Or another thing, too, that happens, if we're doing a wedding and we have, you know, a few people that want to come down into the lounge and just kind of continue it for a little bit while, a little while longer, we call it an afterglow, you know, and that doesn't last that long either, you know?
And can I just, I, I just noticed on the application itself that was in our Dropbox, there's an identification of, I think, a total occupancy, I think? Is there a, there were two blanks, though, in the application for, is that not defined yet by the building inspector?
We're trying to ascertain that information. I think you're referring to, and correct me if I'm wrong, the square footage and the seating capacity?
Yes, yes.
My understanding was this building has been owned and historically operated by the town of North Reading, and we did look for those, those numbers. An inquiry's been made, and I couldn't, maybe someone's out there and I haven't spoken with them yet, but I couldn't find the person that could just affirmatively tell me, oh yeah, we know exactly the square footage of this, of the building and its, and its X, or, or we know exactly what the seating capacity is and its, and its Y. We have the occupancy number, but-
The maximum occupancy?
Yeah, and where it's a function facility, I think that the number had, had been flown over, you know, years depending on setups. So-
So that's not because there were any internal renovations that happened then?
No, no, what was there, what is there now, and what was there before the license agreement was presented into for Mr. Yever to operate the function facility, which is going to be exactly what's there today and tomorrow and going forward?
We've done an extensive remodeling to the, to the facility.
Because the occupancy number is 350.
Lighting, we haven't changed anything other than that there, and we've upgraded on it.
I'm just reading off of the-
That we, maximum occupancy, right? You know, with all the servers and staff and-
And cabin is 163 according to this document.
Yeah.
Did you get your question answered or not?
Yes, I think so.
I'm sorry.
I think so, is someone gonna define that for you?
We've had a little bit of a rough time getting all the information, some of it's old, some of it wasn't up to date, but we tried to, you know, put together.
It should pretty much shadow the previous license, right?
But it's the same as what, what's being proposed is same as what was proposed on the previous operator.
That's the last expired license for PBL, for the location.
And the license of bottom left-hand corner.
Okay.
Mr. Friska?
We're gonna continue-
Have a separate liquor license for the clubhouse? That's gonna go away?
No, that, I'm not aware that any request will be forthcoming. That's correct, I'm not aware that any license application will be forthcoming, and I believe that it's a conditional license to operate the facility with Group One Entertainment as well.
If I may, that was one of the conditions that we agreed to, that no other alcohol on the premises except for, for the, for the facility.
So here's my only little concern, and I think it's wonderful that we're reopening the pub, but serving alcohol at 8:00 AM for a golf outing on a Monday or any day, I guess I'm kind of a little concerned about it, starting to consume alcohol at 8:00 AM, golf environment, outdoors, you know, I'd be a little more comfortable if it was more like 10:00 AM, but, I don't know, if anyone else has that concern, when I read it, and maybe I've seen it before and I just never realized it, but being an avid golfer and going to a lot of events, boy, some of my friends started drinking at 8:00 AM, and if Sean Delaney is listening, I'll mean, you know-
You're hanging around with the wrong guys.
If I could answer that?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's incumbent on any operator to make sure that the serving of alcohol is done responsibly on their premises and within the common laws of the Commonwealth, and I think the hours of operation on any of his employees, who's operating, and Mr. Yever, I think, has shown-
That's a great point.
-an exemplary operation, all of his operations, both within the town and in other areas, and I think your concerns can adequately be addressed by that, even if it was served at 8:00 AM or, or whatever time, it's going to be done responsibly, and it's on Mr. Yever to make sure that no one is overserved and everyone is properly handled in the way that you absolutely would want it to be handled.
Thank you. Good.
Any other questions from before, any questions from anyone in the audience? Mrs. Abbey?
You moved the microphone over to you, Abby, I'm sorry, just because people at home can not-
I remember the Thompson Club, and I remember some of the controversy when Mr. Yever was first gonna take it over. I think he's done a spectacular job. I'm delighted that he's gonna be at Hillview, and I'm equally delighted that they're gonna reopen the pub, which I think was a important item for not only the golfing community, but for other community members as well, so I would urge you to go forward with his license.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I'm in full support of the application based upon Mr. Yever's performance here in our community and in other communities, and his reputation and his ability to make success, great success out of every operation that he's touched thus far, and I'm really very pleased that he expressed an interest in Hillview and has stepped forward to rejuvenate it and reopen the pub, which was one of the requirements that the commission put forth in relation to the proposals that were put, put out there, and there's no doubt in my mind, it's gonna be a terrific operation, and he's gonna do, continue to do a great job and be a great member of the community in North Reading. As far as the hours of operation, this seems to be a pretty boilerplate license that we've been issuing for all of our establishments, and to Attorney Ford's point, it's more the operator than it is the operation itself, so I have a great deal of confidence in Mr. Yever and wholeheartedly support his, his application.
I too. I'm delighted that you've elected to move into the Hillview for your larger events. I know full well, every time I go by Teresa's prime, that the parking lot is full, appears to be full, which demonstrates a successful business.
Thank you so much.
And I think, you know, the Hillview, the Hillview Golf Course has been a very important part of North Reading for the past 27 years now?
More than that now, yeah, it's 1888, 28 years?
20. And to have you running the function hall, it's just, it's just an honor from my point of view. I wish you a lot of success.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Yever?
Yes, I'll try and make this unanimous type in discussion, at least. I wasn't involved in the negotiations or anything like that, but I have to say from, from my observation, that working with you, Mr. Yever, was very positive, it was a, and working with Steve and with the Hillview Commission, I think that everything seemed to have gone very smoothly. I mean, there's always little glitches here and there, but everybody seemed to be working together to make this happen, and especially yourself, so it appeared to me that you're going to be a positive addition to this side of town as well, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point, I think it's important to note that Mr. Yever has also ensured that any employee of Hillview that was there previously has an opportunity to remain employed there and work for Mr. Yever, so I think that's it.
If I may, we have hired quite a few of the waitstaff from Hillview already, and we're still, you know, going through them, you know, going through their resumes. We always felt that we didn't wanna, the only thing we wanted to do is to change the look of the place and make it, bring it up to date, but we really didn't want to change the personnel, we, you know, didn't need to, because we know how hard that is when you displace a person when something like this happens, so we've really diligently to try to not only bring the, the club up to today's, you know, modern tech, standards, rather, we try to save as many jobs as we possibly could.
Before I, I'm sorry, one more.
Just two quick things. First one's an administrative, so on the motion that's gonna be read tonight, it says Group One Entertainment doing business as Hillview Country Club, but in the application it says Group One Entertainment, but doing business as, I think it's Hillview, Teresa's or Teresa's Hillview?
It's Teresa's of Hillview, and the second name obviously is the one downstairs.
So do we want to change our motion to read as such?
I was gonna say-
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, good.
Steve, did you see that motion? I just, I want to make sure they match up, they're in our, it's in our packet, really on our end, I just want to make sure we have the right motion. And then, while they're looking at that, again, I want to thank you again for coming to the rescue of the Hillview, and we hope it's a great partnership for both the town and for Teresa's.
I think you will, yes, to address that young lady there, that I remember her from the Thompson, we're not only looking to, to energize the part of the golf club that needs that, you know, for food, but we're looking for the community support, too, and we're making that way over for the community.
And they appreciate it.
We're thinking about going back to breakfasts on the weekends, and we want to make it a community pub, we want it to be, be a fun place and a place where people can go to have some food.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to-
My pleasure, thank you.
Partaking, so.
Thank you so much.
This is right the way it is.
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it is, Michael, as far as the question, only because the license agreement allows him to use the word Teresa, so.
Good, okay.
Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience?
Hi. I'm Victoria Labriola. I'm part of the parents' organization at the Hood School, and we were actually looking to be hosting the very first nonprofit event at the Hillview with you as our caterer, but we understand it might not be ready in time, which is obviously a problem for us, which is why we're here. So I, we came here tonight to make sure that this, this was gonna pass and that we could do whatever we could on our end to make sure that you had your certificate of occupancy, because we've already sent invitations, we can't-
But, but, we need to clear up a few things.
Okay.
All right, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, we tried to target this for the 12th, I believe it's the 12th.
Yes, it's March 12th, correct.
And about a week and a half, it's a little over a week and a half, they notified someone saying that we're gonna, we're gonna have a problem. We realized that we can't make the deadline. One of the things that I think was told to you is that occupancy permits and licenses are not in place, but that's far from what's left to do there, to make it a safer place to serve. Our kitchens upstairs are taken apart, the building has a good computerization system, and it, the fire's not checked up, there's a host of things that are not complete, which we hoped had, have done, had done by the 12th, and it just didn't happen. So, is, that's why they notified you, they told you we blocked space into the Thompson, the space is beautiful there, it's, is as pretty as this space is gonna be, if not pretty enough, and it, it serves to recall it there to handle that crap.
Right.
We also, I think, said that they would help, notifying everybody, or whatever we had to do to help, we would be more than happy to do that, we'd stick our staff behind that movement to make sure that that, that happened, we'd make that transition. Unfortunately, there is no way that we could in any way be able to do that at the, at the, it's just impossible. We tried, believe me, we tried.
Mr. Yever and, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
It's Victoria Labriola.
The discussion here is not really germane to the public hearing.
Understood.
And I think that, you know, if there's further discussion, you just take it offline. It's, it's not really part of this meeting. So with that, any other questions regarding the liquor license?
I do.
From the audience?
Oh, I do. When do you think those renovations will be completed?
We're gonna be just before Easter, maybe several days before Easter, if, and I've got, if you go by, they, they reckon night and day around the clock.
Is that all renovations or just yours?
Oh, no, 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 the town's renovations are downstairs, has nothing to do with the ballroom, so we've been able to, we're not, we haven't even got into that one yet, but the upper portion of the building where the functions are, we hope to have it done before the 22nd or 23rd of March. Now, we've had to push the date back, it's, we were originally gonna keep all the kitchen equipment after checking it out.
And Steve, when was the agreement for?
The original date was April 1st.
Everything fell apart on us, and it's not worth having, taking a chance of maybe causing a fire, having people come in there, and, and, no, we won't do it, we can't do it, we won't, we won't risk anybody's, first of all, safety, we've never, in the 51 years I've been in business, ever, you know, took that kind of a chance, safety, just in the surroundings, and food handling, that's, that's, we got a little ways, God bless you, we got a little ways, we got a little ways to go to get that to where we have to, we have to, I apologize for that, it's, just, we tried.
Yeah, the original plan was, again, for April 1st, was the, was the target date between the commission, town administrator, and Mr. Yever. He undertook a very ambitious attempt to move the timeline up in order to accommodate a couple of events, but with no guarantees that he could do it, and was, it is ambitious, and even what he's professing right now is, is an ambitious attempt. Keep in mind that there's also another project going on simultaneously here down on the pub in relation to the kitchen in the pub that's under contract with the town, gonna be doing that work, not Mr. Yever, which is, you know, going to be probably a couple months away, I would think, before that's even completed. So, you know, in relation to the application that's before us, you know, I don't think anybody has any concern in relation to what Mr. Yever did agree to with the commission was to work with any groups or organizations or private parties that had contracted with the previous operator to accommodate them as best he could, come to some agreement with them, give them the opportunity to walk away if they so chose, and I think he's done everything in good faith to try and do that, to the best of my knowledge.
Mr. O'Leary, we also blocked space at the Thompson that's equally inside.
Right.
So that we wouldn't have a problem if that happened. And we moved one other party, that, which was the day after, we moved that into, actually Middleton, it was a smaller party and it fit better into Middleton, and we put out people to work to make that all come together, and that's what we offered to do, to try to get it.
So, while there may be some disappointment in relation to, you know, not being able to be there on the 12th, it's unfortunate, but it isn't to do a lack of effort on Mr. Yever's part, and again, I think it's important that we just move forward on the application that's before us and let him work with the parties to, to accommodate him as best they can.
Mr. Friska?
No, I know your desire isn't to take this particular issue up associated with the liquor license, but I just want to make a quick statement about it, because these folks are us, I mean, they represent our community, and it just sounds like it's an unfortunate situation the way it all went down, so I don't want to leave them in the lurch, I think if we could just leave them with the hope that you can work something out with Mr. Yever, and for some reason, if they can't, and they want to do something locally, Mr. and Ms. Harry, is there a way we can give them one, one-day liquor license to use one of maybe our local facilities or town facilities?
Excuse me, the liquor license, if you don't understand the liquor license-
No, Mr. Yever, that's not what I'm saying.
Oh.
If they can't work-
We have a facility outside.
Okay, I just, I just want to-
We have a facility outside.
Mr. Yever, I'm just trying to make sure they understand, I don't want them to feel like the town's leaving them in the lurch, even though, you know, this is, this is a business transaction, but the way it all went down, I assume they had this already booked with the previous manager of the building, and you were trying your best- your best to accommodate, it didn't work out, but that manager was there under our approval, and so I just feel like we owe them a little bit of support on this. So, hopefully you can work it out. If you can't, reach out to me, maybe the Town Administrator, if we, you know, if you can't come to terms and if we have a local facility here, and the Board can consider a one-day liquor license for one event, it's something we've done before. That's all I wanna say. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I just think, you know, don't leave any false sense of security or hope here, because, you know, in order to issue a one-day license, you have to have a whole host of lottery list of requirements to, you know, who's gonna get the license, where's this gonna be, you know, who's gonna be tips trained, liability insurance, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's really the issue.
Did I not hear Mr. Yever say that he was gonna accommodate the group?
Yes.
At Teresa's prime?
No, not, the banquet facility. The ballroom, yeah, the big ballroom. It's all set to go.
It's set to go.
So, I guess, as much as I wanted to move on, is there an issue with that?
Well, we had contracted with them directly, and so we just, we wished we had known before, and it doesn't fit the same amount of people, so that means less money that we can raise for the Hood School. That's the bottom line. So, we just wished we had known, because now we're raising less money for our children, and that's a problem.
I don't think this facility's gonna work out for them.
Okay, that I didn't know.
Right, and that's right, I mean, we already have 150 tickets sold, and generally anywhere from 50 to people show up at the door, and now we can't...
We just set a time for Nacho and Pink, they had 235 people, but instead their cocktail was still plenty of room.
Right, but that's not, we sell tables, right?
Yeah, but we already made accommodations for the tables. We opened up the private steakhouse, and we blocked that out, so you could put all your tables in there. So, what we did was we were ahead of, we were ahead of the curve on this here.
No, but it's changing the whole format tonight, so that's all.
Maybe when we get through with this, maybe Mr. Yever will stay along long enough to, to get together.
Yeah, and it all just could've been averted if we had known that the timeline wasn't gonna work. Then we would've changed the date.
It's out of the Board's control. It was probably out of Mr. Yever's control at this point.
Unfortunately, I would've loved to have it there, and I would've loved to have it done by now, to be honest, which at least the other pleasure.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a common vittula license to Group One Entertainment, LLC, doing business as Hillview Country Club, to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Second, Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion from the Board only. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous.
There's a second motion.
Second motion, Kate.
Yeah, right, I got it.
There is a second motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a common vittula, all alcohol license to Group One Entertainment, LLC, doing business as Hillview Country Club, to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion, hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous.
This, this one isn't gonna be on the front anyway, 'cause it's gotta go to A, B, C, C, D, F, O, so they... Wouldn't it be Dan and the Gloria, the other guys?
So, new business?
Right.
Mr. Gilberto, do you wanna wait a minute, or?
I pushed the microphone up, so I came across, so, even though I did this.
So...
I'm out of motions, so if there's anything else...
I believe that's the conclusion of the agenda for this evening.
Just briefly, we have a meeting scheduled next Monday.
A note with regard to that meeting, Mr. Chairman, I do expect that the executive session portion of the meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. Excuse me, we have a public hearing scheduled at 7:30 PM, I believe, for the Thompson Club, if I'm not mistaken. And we'll have budget hearings as well that evening. I believe we have either five or six departments that we've scheduled for, for that evening.
So, to accommodate you, for further discussions on the health insurance?
I'm gonna have to look closer at the agenda, if we can talk about his availability and what makes the most sense, but I can't, I can't give a time right now.
We'll take that into account.
Sure.
I didn't expect an answer now, but just so that he doesn't find himself sitting on the car.
I missed, um...
Talking about our next meeting, executive session.